All right, thanks Brian, and welcome everyone to this February 12, 2024 meeting of the Homewood City Council. I am in luck tonight because unfortunately for him, the mayor is sick, but I get to do something that I otherwise wouldn't get to do, which is to honor our own Melody Salter. So I'm going to come down here.
Let's give Salter for you and him too.
You don't know what I did to him if you made him sick.
You'll be the first. I forget this.
You've seen this once or twice.
But I'm always so busy trying to make sure all the pieces tie together, you know.
The least in the details.
What did he say?
Sign in.
I'm a rule follower, so you're so, you know.
State your name.
Where your address is, all that stuff. Yeah. That's funny. All right, this is a proclamation from the mayor. Whereas Melody Salter joined the city of Homewood as principal accountant treasurer in the finance department on March 1, 2010, and has now resigned her position; and whereas Melody Salter was promoted to finance director in April 2015 and used her position to tirelessly advocate for employees, she is responsible for implementing various employee benefits such as flexible spending accounts, sick leave rollover policy, along with the employee donated leave policy. And whereas Melody Salter was appointed city clerk in June 2016 and merged the finance department and the clerk's office while enrolled in the University of Alabama at Birmingham in pursuit of an MBA, she has always been an advocate for academic advancement. And whereas Melody Salter accepted all assignments without hesitation, even from those other departments, even those from other departments and performed them all admirably. She was always eager to help employees and citizens with their problems and frequently went the extra length to give aid and assistance without anticipation of repayment of effort. And whereas Melody Salter's sincere attitude and dedication has served as an excellent example to those under her leadership and throughout the community over the years, Melody Salter will always be remembered as a great employee, a wonderful coworker, and a true friend to all. Now therefore, I, Patrick McCleskey, Mayor of the city of Homewood, do hereby express my sincere appreciation and gratitude to Melody Salter for 13 years of dedicated service to the city and highly commend her for the manner in which she carried out her duties and responsibilities. I also extend my personal best wishes upon her resignation and for continued success in life's pursuit.
Make me cry. Thank you. Thank you. Somebody's got to take a picture of me and my daughter.
No. You can all come down and get a picture.
I promise I don't save that five minutes, but can I say something real quick? But I talk really, I talk fast.
Really? Boy, that would be a change.
Especially in budget time when I have like 10 minutes.
Is this from yours?
That's my little daughter.
One that looks like her?
No, it's a baby, it's more the born. She looks like me.
Maybe I need to be over here.
Yeah.
Ready?
Yeah.
One, two.
I don't keep my coverage with her. She raised the G-pull a little bit.
You're always just President Wyatt now?
Oh, yeah, sure.
You want me to hold this up?
I still have the same number so you can, I'll text it to me. Thank you all very much for allowing me to speak and also I'll thank you for allowing me to be your city clerk and finance director as well. But anybody that knows me knows I love to talk and I like to do it fast, although I told President Wyatt one time he just needed to listen quicker because I couldn't talk slower. But I rarely post on Facebook and I did see a post, I know I need to, I promised to stay off Facebook, about my retirement and it's the first time I've ever responded as, on Homewood site, but I figured since I wasn't, not an employee now and I was a civilian, that it was okay, but I promise I did it very tastefully. But I would just like to kind of read an excerpt of what I wrote and it kind of sums up my heart and how I feel and I thought that it would just give me closure, although we didn't break up, but you know what I'm talking about. Girls need closure sometimes. So this is what I wrote. I promise in the 14 years that I was honored to be Homewood's finance director, city clerk, which by the way, I did raise my hand to volunteer when the former city clerk had to retire, they were worried about personnel board lists, I was like, I'll do it, you don't have to pay me. And then the city clerk assistant finance director. I worked tirelessly to give all that I have to the residents and employees of Homewood because I really have loved the residents and the employees and I gave everything I had to my position, sometimes unfortunately putting it over my own family, and I'm sorry, Catherine, if I did that sometimes, but that's how dedicated I was to my position. I never technically lived in Homewood, but a lot of weeks I spent more time there than my actual home, so y'all probably should have charged me property tax. And I can assure you as a CPA, I worked very hard to rebuild the finance department when hired by Mayor McBrayer in 2010. They'd kind of gone through, I guess, a similar season where a bunch of employees had retired and left for other positions at one time. And so it was literally me and one person that had three weeks' experience and then another person and that was it. So I gave all that I had to that. I'm proud, I'm proud of what I accomplished during my time here in Homewood. I would have liked to have seen it, to be able to complete a few more projects and I know the timing may look quickly, but I had been praying about it and I was afforded the opportunity to take a position that I feel like God has for me in the future, or has for me to do that will, I just got my 25 years in and actually got to have eight months sick time to get to my 25 because I'm the only person that gets threatened by the mayor that, to take time off. And I think I cried one time when President Wyatt told me I had to sell COVID protocol and I couldn't come to work, but I am that nerdy, but I started in RSA when I was 14, so you know, because aren't you always 39 and holding? But anyway, I was, I was a little bit older than that, but anyway, I say early retirement because, anyway, but this position will give me a little more work-life balance and I'm sure that nobody can fault me for that because I feel like I have, I've worked really hard for Homewood, but I am available to answer questions from my successor or not, or successors and not, will always have a special place in my heart for, for Homewood. And this position will allow me to use my 25 years of governmental experience to actually help others across the country that are employed in the private sector by teaching them some software skills and other skills that I've been able to use since I've been on the other side of the desk that they have been. And you know, if everybody knows me, knows I'm a teacher at heart. So I kind of feel like this was just what God had for me in this phase of my life. So I only wish the best for Homewood. I give you the best that I have. And my mom always told me, even though I'm putting a lot of pressure on myself, if you've done your best, that's all you can do, although Catherine tells me sometimes I need to rethink how I live my life when I cried the first time I made a B in the MBA program. But it was in economics and it was, it was a mini-term and Homewood in a mini-term is hard to pull off. So that's my excuse, but again, thank you for the honor and the privilege of being able to say to the confidence that you had in me to be your finance director and your city clerk and then your assistant finance director and city clerk. So it's just a great thing and I appreciate it, so.
Thank you again.
See, I'll be okay if I don't stay because I actually have my money now.
We, you don't have to stay and listen to the rest of this. You've listened to enough. And, and the mayor's sorry that he couldn't be here tonight and he would have been, but for his illness, so.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. We're going to start tonight with an invocation from Counselor Smith and that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
If you'll bow your heads and pray with me.
Dear God, as we step into this sacrificial season of Lent, we acknowledge all that you have given us. You promise that where two or three of us are gathered, you are there. Lord, we welcome you amongst us today and celebrate the gifts that have been given to each of us. We ask that you would open our ears to hear your voice, open our minds to receive your wisdom, open our spirits to know your leading and your guidance, and open our hearts to receive your grace and your love. We humbly ask for your guidance, wisdom, and support in this meeting as we engage in meaningful discussion and nurture the bonds of our community. We ask all of this in your glorious name. Amen.
Mr. Seacrest, if you'll please call roll.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gualdney.
Here.
Here.
Alamon.
Wolverton.
Here.
Sims.
Here.
Jones.
Smith.
Here.
Nelms.
Here.
Andrus.
Here.
Harden.
Here.
President Wyatt.
Here. All right, we've got 10 of us tonight. Next, we have the reading of the minutes from our council meeting of January 29, 2024. Those have previously been distributed. I would entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of those minutes and for approval of the same.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Nelms. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Measure approved 10 to 0. Next, we have board vacancies. First, we have a BZA position that I think there's a nomination for.
Yes, we, yes, for Ward 4. We interviewed two candidates last week, both of whom were very good, and we are going to move to nominate, or I guess to re-nominate Megan Hand. She is the current chair of the BZA and has an additional term that she can serve. So we would like to appoint her.
All right, so we have a motion from Ms. Smith, we have a second from Ms. Nelms.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations to Ms. Hand, serving another term. That is a vote of 10 to 0 of approval. All right, next, we have two beautification board spots that we need to open, both of those I believe are in Ward 1, is that correct, Mr. Simpson? Okay, so we will open those. Do you know how long you, we should leave that open? Do you want to say about a month?
I would like to try to, the board met today, so I would like to try to do two weeks to see if some, if at least one can be filled by the next meeting and then if not, we'll do four weeks after that.
Okay, then we'll do it for February 26 at 4:30. Thank you. All right, and then just a reminder that we have, I believe, four arts council positions that are open, two at large, Award 4 and Award 5. Those will also close on February 26 at 4:30. All right, we do have one sort of halfway addition to the agenda, an item that is on the committee referral agenda, 050224, request to set a public hearing and referral to the Planning and Development Committee for reconsideration to rezone 1300 Columbiana Road from I-2 to C-1. This is an item that was before, it went back to the Planning Commission, the request was amended, that's coming back to us to, on committee referral, it came to, sort of the planning, from the Planning Commission with a 5 to 0 to 1 favorable recommendation. We're going to also add that to other new business just to set the public hearing. So with that one addition, I entertain a motion and a second for approval of the amended agenda.
Moved to approve.
Second. Motion for Mr. Wolverton, second for Mr. Gualdney, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As approved 10 to 0. All right, we don't have anything on the consent agenda tonight, so we'll go straight to old business. First item, 100124, request to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with ALDOT for the operation of traffic control signals along US 31 and Alabama 149, also Lake Shore Drive, brought to us by Kale Smith. And we'll start with a report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the finance committee met Monday, February 5 and for this particular item voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval.
All right, so we have a motion from finance, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved 10 to 0 and will be resolution 2414. Next item, 110124, request to, request for consideration of placing full-page ad in the Chamber of Commerce magazine, brought to us by Counselor Andrus, and another report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the finance committee met, voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval of funding of this. This is 1,795, it's budgeted 4 to 0.
All right, we have another motion from finance, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 10 to 0 and will be resolution 2415. Next item, 120124, request to authorize the mayor to require Alabama firefighter disability insurance, brought to us by Robert Brigette, and another report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the finance committee met, voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval and funding of $7,425 for this item.
All right, so we have another motion from finance, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also 10 to 0 and will be resolution 2416. Next item, 130124, request for consideration of budget amendments for fiscal year 2324, brought to us by John Morgan and Robert Brigette, and another report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the finance committee met, voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval of this item.
All right, so we have another motion from finance, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also 10 to 0 and will be resolution 2417. Next item, 140124, request for permission to add a crosswalk with pedestrian signals at Salter Road and South Wellington Road, brought to us by Kale Smith. And we'll start with a report from public safety, Mr. Gualdney.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the committee met on February 5 and voted 4 to 0 to recommend this item for approval. The motion was made by Counselor Harden and seconded by Counselor Nelms.
All right. So we have a motion from public safety. Mr. Kendrick, can you give us the first reading?
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance to provide for the installation of a pedestrian crosswalk intersection of Salter Road and South Wellington Road in the city. Peter Dane has followed the chief of police, shall be directed to install a pedestrian crosswalk at, across Salter Road, at intersection of Salter Road and South Wellington, as identified in Exhibit A, with a pedestrian signal. Section 2, all drivers of motor vehicles defined by the code shall yield to pedestrians located within the crosswalk. Section 3, any person found guilty of violation of this ordinance shall be punished as provided by Section 1-8 of the Code of Ordinances. Section 4, all the ordinance of the parts of ordinance contrary to the provisions hereby repealed. Section 5, if any part of provision or ordinance declared to be unconstitutional or invalid, court accomplishes jurisdiction shall not affect other parts of provisions of the ordinance not directly thereby affected. Section 6, the provisions or ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage and approved by the mayor and city council.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kendrick. And now entertain a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Nelms, and roll call vote, please, Mr. Seacrest.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gualdney.
Yes, sir.
Gear.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Nelms.
Yes.
Andrus.
Yes.
Harden.
Yes.
President Wyatt.
Yes. All right, so now we'd entertain a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Gualdney, and another roll call vote, please, Mr. Seacrest.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gualdney.
Yes, sir.
Gear.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Nelms.
Yes.
Andrus.
Yes.
Harden.
Yes.
President Wyatt.
Yes, so that is approved 10 to 0 and will be resolution 2891. All right, next item, 150124, request for consideration for special event liquor license at the Battery at 2821 Central Avenue, brought to us by Jeremy Stevens and J.J. Bischoff. And we'll start with a report from public safety, Mr. Gualdney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last week, the committee met and after hearing from Mr. Stevens, the committee voted 4 to 0 to recommend, without objection, the motion was made by Counselor Jones and seconded by Counselor Harden.
Either Mr. Gualdney or Mr. Kendrick, either one. Does this require police approval? I know it doesn't require fire, but does it require police?
Yeah, I don't think it does, but I'm not positive.
All right.
Typically, it just requires our.
Just our, no objection.
The ABC four is a form church and we have no objection.
Got it, okay. All right. All right, so we have a motion from public safety, any questions or comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved 10 to 0. Next item, 160124, request for consideration for special event liquor license for The Taste of Homewood on City Hall Plaza, brought to us by Meredith Brennan and J.J. Bischoff, and another report from public safety, Mr. Gualdney.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the committee met last Monday and voted 4 to 0 to recommend, without objection, the motion was made by Counselor Jones and seconded by Counselor Harden.
All right, so we have another motion from public safety, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also approved 10 to 0. Next item, 170124, request for consideration to permit replacement of existing retaining wall in the right-of-way at 608 Warwick Road, brought to us by Kathy Welch and Wyatt Pugh. And we'll start with a report from Public Works, Mr. Wolverton.
Yes, the committee, committee met and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval pending the proper indemnification agreement and the motion was made by Counselor Gear and seconded by Counselor Harden.
All right, so we have a motion from Public Works, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also approved 10 to 0 and will be resolution 2418. Next item, 040124, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of assigned variance at 1916 28th Avenue South, brought to us by White House Interiors, Cassie, Cassie Virchell of Alpha Graphics and Wyatt Pugh. And we'll start with a report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes, the committee met last week and heard from Ms. Virchell and voted 5 to 0 to refer this item out to the full council without a recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. And the motion was made by Ms. Andrus and seconded by Counselor Alamon.
All right, so with that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing on this matter. See Mr. Pugh coming up and I believe Ms. Virchell as well.
Brian, can you put the, thank you.
Whoever wants to go first, if you'll just tell us what the, what you're proposing.
Okay, um, thank you for having me here tonight and for considering this. The existing furniture side, sign on the side, I was going to request variance for that, but my sign team put it up ahead of time, so I ask your forgiveness for that. But there's always, there's been a sign back, two, even two tenants ago there. We didn't change the size or anything like that, we just refaced it so that people from 31 could see that there's a furniture store there. Everything else is in compliance that we put up on the front, external lighting, no front light signs or anything like that. So I'm just requesting approval for this for the client.
And I can't remember, Ms. Virchell, that, there's no lighting or anything, right? It's just, it's just the word, essentially.
The letters are a quarter inch dimensional, but no lighting or anything like that.
Right, okay, thank you.
So this is just a number variance?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pugh, okay.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Wait, hang on. Yeah, that's okay. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? I'll close the public hearing. Now ask the very questions or comments from council, or if not, a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion from Ms. Smith, a second from Ms. Gear. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oops, sorry, thank you. All right, so we have a 9 to 0 to 1 vote, which means it passes and there will, this will be resolution 2419. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, 180124, request for permission for a tent in the city right-of-way in front of Track Shack from February 23 through February 25, brought to us by Counselor Andrus, and another report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes, committee met last week and heard from Mr. Martinez at the Track Shack and voted 4 to 0 to recommend approving the tent variance. Motion was made by Ms. Andrus and seconded by Counselor Gear.
All right, so we have a motion from Special Issues, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that's approved 10 to 0 and will be resolution 2420. Next item, 200124, request for permission for facility use agreement for the Plaza for Taste of Homewood, brought to us by Meredith Brennan and J.J. Bischoff, and another report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes, committee met last week, voted 4 to 0 to recommend approving this item. We're very excited about Taste of Homewood on the Plaza again this year. Motion was made by Ms. Andrus and seconded by Counselor Gear.
All right, so we have another motion from Special Issues, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that's approved 10 to 0 and will be resolution 2421, which brings us to the committee referral agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the committee referral agenda.
So moved, or second.
Motion by Ms. Nelms, second by Ms. Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As approved 10 to 0, which brings us to other new business, 060224, request for consideration to authorize the mayor to sign contract and pay fiscal year 2324 budget appropriation for Operation School Bell, brought to us by J.J. Bischoff. This is one of those already budgeted items, we just need the approval to sign the contract. All right, any questions or comments about this? If not, I would entertain a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Gualdney, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that's approved 10 to 0 and will be resolution 2422. Next item, 070224, request for consideration of a tent variance for Trinity United Methodist Church for Discovery Weekend, brought to us by Counselor Smith. Just so everyone knows, this was, there was a timing issue with this, so that's, and this is an item that's come up every year for as long as I can remember. So it's something that everyone's familiar with, but that's why I put it on other new business rather than committee referral, as we would normally do. We didn't want to hold up their event and this is pretty standard for what they've requested in the past, correct, Ms. Smith?
Sorry, it is exactly the same tent that they have used previous years, it's going to be in the exact same spot on the small parking lot on the Seminole side of the church. The tent is 40 by 100, which is the same tent they've been using, and it is going to be up no earlier than Wednesday, February 28, and then will be taken down on Monday, March the 4th.
All right, any questions or comments? If not, entertain a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Gualdney, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that's approved 10 to 0 and will be resolution 2423. Next item, 080224, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of January 30, 2024 through February 12, 2024, brought to us by Robert Brigette. Mr. Jones, who's?
Yeah, I yield to Mr. Gualdney.
I should have known that, I saw you back there looking at it.
Thank you, Mr. President. I took some time this afternoon, reviewed all of the vouchers and the manual POs, and I didn't see anything out of the ordinary, so I would make a motion for approval.
All right, so we have a motion for Mr. Gualdney and a second from Ms. Smith, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved 10 to 0 and will be resolution 2424. Last item is 050224, request to set a public hearing and referral to the Planning and Development Committee for reconsideration to rezone 1300 Columbiana Road from I-2 to C-1. The applicant is Eric Rogers, Progressive Properties, PLLC, and the owner is Second Presbyterian Church to permit the construction of an 11,000 square foot, single-story medical office building. Said proposed rezoning to exclude the southern portion of the subject property presently occupied by the Second Presbyterian Church, which will remain zoned I-2. This comes to us from the Planning Commission with a vote of 5 to 0 to 1, favorable recommendation. We will set that public hearing for March 11 at 6:00 PM. And with that, we've reached the end of the agenda. I know we don't have the mayor tonight. Uh, J.J., do you have anything?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Gaultney?
Um, I will set Public Safety immediately following Finance at 5:00 PM. Uh, other than that, I have no comments. Thank you.
Ms. Gear?
Um, yes, I'd just like to have a couple of acknowledgements. First, there was a great success at the Arts Council, Shaun of the South and Three on a String event. It was a sold-out house, and they raised over $30,000 to help. Actually, they completely covered the rest of the travel expenses to Dublin with that amount, and so it was greatly appreciated. And I'd never seen Shaun of the South live or that whole act, and it was really fun, so enjoyed it. And then, I would like to just acknowledge, make it a, not, one more acknowledgement that I just received an email from today. It's related to the Islamic Academy of Alabama that's here in Homewood. So, um, over the past years, they have been very successful in this worldwide robotics competition. Last year, they placed 21st out of 800 teams from around the world, and this year, they have, they have won our area and will be representing Homewood and Auburn next weekend. So, I just want to acknowledge them and wish them luck, and we'll let you know what, how they did. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wolverton?
Uh, I have no committee to set, it appears. Remind me, the next time we do have an item, there's one thing that Kale and I had discussed. I just, there's no particular rush on it, but we'll just add it on at that point in time. And then, I just, we, I, I know I mentioned before Christmas, my grandfather was sick. He did pass away December 15th. We kind of held off on a service until after the holidays, and school was back in session for the university. And so, we were able to go over and kind of celebrate his life on last Friday. So, that's him at, on campus at the old main building when they remodeled, and they named the rotunda after him. Obviously, him loving on that great-grandchild. And then, these, these two, you know, something that's kind of special about every time you get to spend time with, with people, it's just kind of a different phase of life. You know, he had lost a lot of mobility last year or two, and was essentially in his room a lot. But we were going over about every month or six weeks, and I'd bring over a set of clippers and give him a fresh cut, and usually give him a little shave, and it just lit him up. So, um, you know, it's, it's just fun time, special time with everybody. And I'm just really thankful that, you know, my kids got to spend time with him. So, I had a great-grandfather myself growing up, but didn't see him very often, so, um, it's, it's just neat to me to be able to share him with other people. That really came, came out in his service, just how many people he had affected, touched beyond, you know, our own individual family. So, um, I'm just really, really proud, really thankful for him. And obviously, there's a lot of things. I've got plenty of character flaws. And it's, it's funny to listen to stories about him from other people because, I, I mean, to be, I'm sure he has character flaws. You almost never heard him raise his voice, get upset. I mean, my grandmother was very difficult to deal with sometimes. And, um, he was the most patient individual I think I've ever seen. So, we, uh, yeah, it was, it was just a fun time to kind of enjoy hearing all those stories and to, just to remember all the things about him that were really, really special. And hopefully, you know, remind us about ways that we can look to improve and, and be a little bit more like him every day. But he always, he always had, I think the funniest thing about, you know, what was said of his services, he had plenty of jokes. Puns abound, but his jokes were never at the cost of anybody else, which is pretty enduring and I think hard, hard to, hard to come by. So, he was a funny guy. He just never, you know, poked fun at other people. Uh, and I think that that's something that I certainly will strive to, to make sure, you know, we can, we can do. And I might have to learn a bunch of puns that I'm maybe not familiar with, but, um, but yeah, that, that was, that was really just, so thank you guys for your prayers and thoughts over that time. And, um, again, thankful that we got to spend time with, with family over this weekend. So, thank you.
Sounds like a very special person. Mr. Sims?
Yeah, that's great. Counselor Wolverton, that's, it was, it was great to see those photos. Thanks so much for sharing that with us. Really appreciate it. Just wanted to let everybody know, the Homewood varsity basketball team, the boys' team, did win the area this past Thursday and won their sub-region game on Saturday. Will be playing at Jacksonville State on Friday at 1:30, if anybody wants to take off work early and make it down there. That's where I'll be. So, just wanted to give them a shout out, and hopefully, you know, they keep, keep the march going. So, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
I guess we're at that phase in our life that we're all supporting our children and everything, so I'll be going to the Frost Bike Tournament.
Sweet. Uh, Will Andrus does not miss that.
For a reason.
Yes, Will Andrus is not sad to miss that this year.
Where's that one?
At Pelham. It's at the Pelham, uh, complex, a tennis complex.
It's getting cold this weekend?
Yes, yes, it will, it will. Um, thank you for sharing that as well. And I thought about having patience, and I just want to say a quick, you know, congratulations to Melody. When, when she first got here, she had to work with me and working through the budget. And, um, and I think there was one point where the mayor and maybe, I'm not sure who that said, you almost made her cry. And, and, uh, I don't know, I was kind of maybe a little too hard on her on a couple of things, but we, but she is such a tireless worker, and she always had the right, her heart was always in the right place. And we went through some challenging endeavors. Uh, one of them was to write that fiscal policy. That was one of the most difficult things to kind of work through, because we wanted to cover everything. And then, so when people now complain about transparency, that, that was written completely for transparency, and I'm proud of it. It goes back to Tony Smith when he was on the council, but, um, I, I enjoyed working with her, and I'm going to miss her, and I'm excited about the, the new chapter of her life. But just want to mention, we worked through a lot of budgets together, and, and I enjoyed my time working with her, and wish her the best. So, I'll have.
Thank you.
Finance is at 5:00, as usual.
Ms. Smith?
Um, special issues to follow, Public Safety, and, um, the Homewood Historic Preservation Commission meets tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM upstairs on the fourth floor. And, um, just agree with Walter, appreciate everything that Melody has done for our city and all of her hard work as she is. I mean, you, it's not, it would not be surprising to get emails and texts from her on a Saturday or a Sunday or a nighttime, whenever it was, because she was always kind of thinking about and working for the city. So, going to miss her, but again, also, yeah, excited for her to start this new, this new gig and, and find some, like she said, find a little work-life balance. That's always a good thing. And that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Gels?
Yeah, Melody, um, if she did half of what she did for me prior to me even being on this council, I know that she has touched all of us. Um, the way she treated my daughter, my daughter registered to vote or something she was doing for the first time, I think, no. She was doing her absentee voting, and she was like the first one to show up, and so Melody made her feel really special about that. And so, she was the first person to vote for me. But Melody has just been ridiculously supportive to my family, as if my girls were her own. So, I know she's done half of that for me when she's only known me maybe 15 years or so, that, you know, you guys definitely know what that's like. And thank you, Andrew, for sharing about your grandfather. That is amazing, and I hope you'll look at his legacy as they grow up. Exactly, exactly. Now, you got to work on that now, but you can do it. You can do it.
Ms. Andrus?
Okay, so we've set, you set Special Issues, right? Okay, I'm going to follow you for PNDs, set PND to follow Special Issues. Um, I will tell you that I made it onto Phase Two of the Greenway yesterday. It's fabulous. I mean, you can now start at the Shell Station on Lake Shore and walk uninterrupted with a trail and/or crosswalk lights, protected access, all the way to Mountain Brook Country Club. So, that is impressive. So, well done to the areas. What's that? Oh, and this fabulous, too. I mean, it is, they did a fantastic job on that, too. Jimson is amazing. It really is. And people are out, people are all out on Phase Two. I know, Kale, I know it's not open yet, but people were out on Phase Two, parked at the trailhead. I mean, you know, it's, it was a great day to be out and about. So, anyway, check it out if you haven't seen it yet. It's really, really very nice. So, that is all I have.
All right. Mr. Harden?
I also had someone tell me, they went on our Phase Two, had to go around barriers. They were on a bike, I think, and, but they loved it. They thought it was fabulous. The, uh, I'm the guy that was in the dark. I had no idea, Melody, why she wasn't here. I still can't find the, I can't find the email she sent. I kept thinking, where's Melody? Why isn't she showing up? I had, I still don't have an email from her. She either kept me off it, but God bless her. She was, she was the most dedicated employee I've ever seen for a city. I mean, she was the most dedicated employee. So, I've, I'm sorry, Walter. I had, I just, I was like, I was like, why is, why is Melody not here? And I just, you know, but there, I, I, if the email came, I don't know what happened. But, uh, anyway, um, I never had a grandfather, so I appreciated that. I, we, my mother's dad died in the 30s, my dad's died, died in the 40s. I never had a grandfather. So, having a grandfather is a special thing, and 98 years old is good for you, by the way. So, that's all I have.
All right. Um, first, I want to thank Walter for doing the meeting, uh, last meeting. Um, I'm sorry, I stuck you with like, I don't know, 50, 60 public hearings. But I appreciate you doing that while I was in trial. And secondly, just want to reiterate what everyone said about Melody and thanking her. I could sit here and tell you a lot of stories, but I will tell you, I did make her cry, and she alluded to it. I made her cry when we were in the middle of COVID, and someone had tested positive near her, and I told her she had to stay home and couldn't come to the meeting. Was it you? Bo, Bo had COVID. Yeah. Oh, I mean, it was an hour conversation of, you can't come to work. I mean, she was furious and crying. I, I promise you, she was, she was bawling, crying, and. So, so we will, we will certainly miss her and appreciate all of her good work for the city that she's given over the years. So, with that, I will adjourn this meeting. We'll see everybody in a couple of weeks.